Start tonight's meeting, June 28th, meeting of the Westwood Planning Board. Abby, our agenda appears to be altered. There are agendas available for the two of you if you'd like in the back. Why don't you tell us what alterations we are going to be making to our agenda?
The first item, the University Station signage request. They request continuing to your next meeting until July 12th. They're still working on that. Last not hearing, so you don't need to continue that by motion. And then the second item, this is the Westwood State subdivision. The public hearing had been continued since it was first opened in March. The applicant has not, today has not submitted the requested information in time that agreement with a law or property order. So I request this hearing be continued to August 8th.
One second.
I move that we continually hearing the Westwood State subdivision, the subdivision and interior movements that go from a public hearing until August 8th.
Second.
August 2nd. Okay, August 2nd at 7:00 PM at the Coffee Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll hear that story in a couple of months. Okay, next Deerfield Avenue Extension, a minor modification to the police headquarters parking lot.
Hi. Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Mark Avril, Power Corporation. As you mentioned, we're here for a minor modification to the design of the police station that we were before, back last year. And specifically the egress route for the police station looking just south of the future building. If you recall, today the police have the emergency egress route authorized for their vehicles only to expedite egress out onto High Street. In the future condition we had proposed on the approved plans to allow for that similar egress route. It was 15 feet wide for pretty much the length there from Deerfield Avenue Extension all the way up to High Street. That same thing to provide for authorized vehicles only to provide that expedited access to the streets for the police. After some recent review through the fire department, they could foresee an instance in which their emergency vehicle may need to access the site coming from Westwood Glen south on Deerfield Avenue Extension and take going west down the emergency egress drive. With that, based on the requirements that they asked us to take a peek at here, we looked, we found we needed to revise the curb radius in the opening right where the egress drive and Deerfield Avenue meet, to widen it from 15 feet to 20 feet there. Expand the radius a little bit to allow for pretty much now all of the emergency vehicles in town to be able to make that turn there. As I mentioned just briefly, some of the changes that we needed to do, that widening of the driveway entrance right there. We needed to remove one parking spot in the back, police parking area there. That allowed us to actually increase the pervious or reduction of pervious area, further reduction of pervious area in that area and to increase some of the plantings in that island as well. And there was a request if, from the fire department, if we could look at revising the curving along just that island. From a vertical granite curving on the approved plans, there's slow granite edging on this revised plan here. That was thought by the fire department in case an emergency vehicle needed to really just jet out of there and to stay on a tire if they, you know, were focused on their exit and clipped the curb accidentally. It just would soften, soften it over there. So we proposed that in this graphic that we see up there as well. We believe this is a minor modification, still in character with the approved plans. And with that, open up to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for board members?
Did you run the template and it didn't work at all on the way you had it before for the right-hand turn there?
Yeah, when we had run that template before, we could get some of the emergency vehicles through there. Specifically, they wanted ladder one. And when running that template through there, after this further review that we have with the fire department, it was, it was getting to the point where it was very, very challenging to get it in there. And we found that it needed to be widened to make ladder one, to make that turn.
Could it make it or couldn't it make it?
It was, it could not make it from that direction based on what they wanted.
Even if it went on the other side of the road and...
We looked at it going through the other, coming on the other side of the road, but that poses a safety hazard for the fire department. They asked us not to look at it in that light.
So what we're looking at here, and normally we get this in three colors, so we can see the front rail, back rail, and the edge of the vehicle.
Yes.
So this looks very confusing. So could you go through and outline because there are three curves and sort of, it's not one part of the vehicle, obviously.
Correct. Take this, will you?
Sure.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
So you'll see, so you'll see following my line, my fingers along here, this is where you're seeing the tire tracks from the front, tire tracks coming in here through the rear. And I think what some people are interested in are in this line right here. And that is more for the back end of the truck. It's such a large back end to the truck that just naturally it swings out into traffic as it makes the corner. But that isn't the tires. These are the tires coming through, staying on its side of the road and coming around to the emergency egress.
Well, the first one must be, what's the second one?
The second one right here.
No, the first, the first loop out must be the rear, that's the rear end.
The rear end right there, yeah.
The back bumper.
The back bumper.
Right. So then the next one?
Right there.
Now, what is that?
It's more of a smooth line. That right there is the, if I recall.
Sorry, it's turning off.
It's okay, it's okay. That right, coming through here would be the front tires of the vehicle coming through here. And then that would be the set of line right here, a set of line right here. And then this more curved, I hate touching this screen, I'm sorry. This more curved line in here and right here are the back wheels coming out inside of it there.
Yeah, what's the other most one?
This one right here. This one right here.
Yeah.
Yep, that's the back end of the...
By the way, where your fingers start, there's a bend in it which...
Right here.
Yeah, but how does that bend?
It's just the adjustment right here for the, for the truck in this area right here. It's just adjustment for itself as it turns, it comes back. So that bend is from the loop that goes on this area here. As I mentioned, the back end of the truck is still there.
So the truck leaves that correction?
Yes, it comes in down through here and then straightens itself out and heads down the road.
So you're saying that's, that's, so even Mr. Olmoff was asking about borrowing room.
Yeah.
If you borrowed room, it looks like if we kept the original...
Correct.
That back end, yeah, that back end is going to be out over this lower curve. So based on that, yeah.
The back end right here just is still at the pits of curve.
But if, but if we use the original, it would be over the curve.
Correct. And we spoke with that with the fire department. As I mentioned, there were some requirements that they asked us to follow. One of them was to keep the fire truck, the back end, if you will, on the road, front end on the road, in case that it still banks right again, they'd like to be able to make that.
Keep it on the sidewalk?
Oh, there is no sidewalk here, but yeah, you're right. Perhaps a sign.
There's an elementary school right next to it, you never know.
You never know. So let's keep it on the road.
Exactly.
So, yeah, so the granite curving.
Yeah.
I mean, again, yeah, this just makes it so I can see a little wiggle room for the granite. But you didn't specify where the, where the sloped granite begins and ends.
Shortens it.
And really need to approve something that's very clear where that is.
Correct. So right here is the, right here you have the curb ramp that's flush. And the green line from here, all the way over, green line ends right there, is slow granite edging. And then we'll take it from there as the vertical granite to the rest of it.
So why, but doesn't that more than you need? Why not just have to look that right there where you think it's not?
Yep.
Right.
What, just talking with the fire department, they were asking maybe if we bring it around here. It's, in case the fire, the police department are just really focused on their calling and they're really expediting their area only here and somehow they accidentally hop this out. That's why we kept going with this little granite around. And that, that was the intent of that. The vertical granite could pick up here and go over, but it adds that little bit of...
But if you go all the way on that curve, obviously there's a little compact there. They would first have to hit a car that was parked in that space. So we can at least move it to actually where that arrow is.
Right there.
At least move it to there.
Yeah. Yeah. And then start the...
I mean, I really think it should start at the curve there where right there.
At the PT right there.
Yeah. I mean, what do you think? Either one of those two spots, but not sure where you would live in, so.
Yeah, what's the disadvantage to that aesthetic?
I mean, we want, no, we want vertical curving. And then we're only trying to put the slope in where we need it. So why not do any more than we need? The reason, the reason we have vertical curving is to...
So in your explanation of that question, if I understand what you said, is if, is this parking for cruisers only or for...
Typically, it's being right behind the police station. It's typically going to be for cruisers and pedestrians.
So the cars leaving there will largely be cruisers?
Correct.
And the thought being every now and then a cruiser will leave.
Very fast.
He's still fresh. And perhaps, they're not going to take a right to go out to High Street. They're going to take a left?
They could take a right. This is emergency egress out of the High Street. But if they're going to this side of town, they want to head out towards Deerfield Avenue Extension in that way. They absolutely could continue on that way. So it gives them a couple of points.
So it's to ostensibly save the time of traffic?
Yeah. Do it where you have the arrow here.
Right up to here?
Yeah, right there.
Okay. And then it starts up where it says granite curb transition, granite transition curve?
Yep.
So it will start right here?
Well, that's long anyway, that's where.
Yep. I was looking, what's that granite transition curve?
That's just saying that we're moving the granite transition curve for the accessible ring that was here to be moved here.
Oh, okay.
And that goes to the accessible range.
Exactly.
And then no parking signs of those newer, those new?
Nope, the new parking signs are part of the project.
And what about the, are there any new plantings or?
So I'll speak for Ricky, we have the architect here, Rick, but he was working with the landscape architect. The original plantings was Mon Armstrong, Red Maple, and 72, I was just going to say PT. And the addition was 15 at...
That was the addition?
So that's the addition.
That's just because you made it correct. And it would have been near image of the other, I don't know, essential, yeah. And we're fine with parking spaces, was the other one?
Yeah, we, we've had extensive conversations with both the fire and the mist case and these, and they, they are okay with it.
Obviously, they would like that.
I would not park this space without that.
Parking space, but in...
Okay.
They accept this, because I have that parking space.
Any other questions to present here? Okay. So we then need to make a motion to find that this is a minor modification first. Do you care to make a sound, Rick, if there is a minor modification? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to accept this minor modification?
I think we should accept this minor modification to the, to 5 million, the High Street, 72 million for that, and then 70 million for the VR mine. We have VR, if this can work.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
It's funny, aren't you?
Yes, I...
Good evening, Abby. We're committed from board of the architects. So we were here last fall, the two of you are the site, overall site, you know. And some flexibility that we needed, we had in your approval, we're continuing to work on the bid documents. And the bid documents were issued earlier this year. So some of that were some, several conversations. There's one particular tree that came up as a topic of discussion with the chief, R G. That's one tree that need, that needed to, that needs to be, I'm trying to bring up, there's one tree that, that needs to be, to be removed in its entirety. And I think we were basically looking for a new tree. The reasons for that is that it would be...
It's hung up?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there is, there is one tree that's okay adjacent to the distant police station. So we had, so after we went in front of you, working into the documents that I mentioned, and we had the excessive conversations, wrapping up the construction documents up there earlier this year. And we're finishing up the grading fines, utility fines. And due to the conditions of the grading, that grading is going to come up, come up higher than just ingrained in some utilities that need to run in this location. There was no way that we could, could keep that tree based in its current location, this one tree. We looked at the possibility of transplanting the tree. We'll get a tree and bring it back. But it was advised by our landscape architect that the tree will not survive, it's aging. And also the fact that, that that was one condition. And so we looked at, so, so what, so we're proposing at this, this point in time is that the, 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 the , the, 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 the,[1626.12]
And when we came back along Washington Street, went down to the East Street Bridge, crossed and back to the ICC. So we covered the entire Islington Center district that the task force is looking at. Then we went back and we discussed the receipt of proposals. Under the RFP, we received one proposal from Petru's Yellow Properties. There were several other people who took out the RFP and chose not to respond. I think what we hear from, what we interpret from that and from my speaking to some of the developers who took out the request was that it's not financially feasible for other developers to purchase those properties from the town. With the, the properties are owned either by the town or by Petru's Yellow Properties. Their interests first, they're next to each other. For another developer to purchase the town properties, they'd need to purchase Petru's Yellow Properties as well. Or work out some arrangement with them. So, you know, we, we got one proposal. We discussed the bare bones of what that proposal is. The board will come back, the task force will come back in September. The date they scheduled is September eighth and they will review the proposal in great detail then. And then if they find that it meets the threshold criteria, which I think they will find that it does, having reviewed it myself. They will schedule an interview or presentation from the developer for September fifteenth.
From the task force?
The task force will. Then the task force will debate the application. They'll review the positive aspects, the negative aspects. They'll discuss where there are negative aspects, if there are ways to cure those aspects that they would recommend. And in the end, they'll come up with a recommendation to the selectmen for or against further pursuit of the proposal. The selectmen will then review the proposal, will take the Islington Task Force committee's recommendation, consider it favorably or negatively, and they will make a decision. It'll be the selectmen's decision whether to pursue the proposal or not. If they choose not to pursue it, it ends there. If they choose to pursue it, then the planning process begins. At that point, the developer would flesh out the concept plan that we have now. And take into consideration the suggestions for curing any negative aspects of it. Which could be as simple as, you know, a minor change to a landscape plan. Or it could be as complicated as moving all the pieces around, changing the disposition of the properties, changing the size, shape, configuration of the buildings. When they get a more developed plan, if they get to that point, then they'll file with this planning board for either site plan review or special permit, depending on what the, what the final site plan gets to that stage. They will file with anyone else they need approval from. Conservation Commission would certainly need to grant approval under the Stormwater Management Act. Maybe the zoning board, we don't know until we get to that level of review. If it got passed this board and the Conservation Commission and any other board that need approval, the next step would be town meeting. Then the proposal, a fully baked proposal, not the concept proposal we received now, but whatever would come out of that, we'd go to town meeting as a fully developed plan. Where you know all the details and then the town meeting would be asked to consider whether or not they wanted to approve it, whether or not they wanted to allow the selectmen to dispose of that property. So we're a long, long way away from anyone making any decisions on this, just beginning of the line of process.
So would they have to apply for a special permit before the town meeting?
Yes, the procedure is for the special permit to be approved, if, if, if they need a special permit or if they need site plan review. Either way, it would have to go to this board before we would take the town.
So that would be pretty.
We'll only take a fully baked proposal to town meeting.
And they wouldn't own the property yet?
They would not. They would have a disposition agreement with the selectmen. They would be subject to all the local rules and to town meeting.
So it's kind of like the selectmen would agree in principle to pursue this, designate the property as selected or whatever.
Right.
And then you go through all this internal process. And once all of that's done, it comes to a final, which is to have the, to have to sell the property.
That's right. You can think of a lot like the process we went through at the university station. And that wasn't town property, it wasn't a sale, but the process was the same. This board reviewed soup to nuts. You didn't just look at the concept plan, you started the concept plan. But you developed it into a fully baked plan where you knew every detail. You knew every tree, where the light fixtures would go, how many parking spaces. And you do the final architectural plan. And it was only at that point the recommendation was made to town meeting. And that's what we're looking for here. We're not taking an idea to town meeting. We'll take a fully baked proposal if we get to that point. Keeping in mind that the selectmen can choose to pursue or not pursue this proposal.
What happens if they choose not to?
If they choose not to, we consider an exercise where we got information on the value of the parcels we own and the opportunities for how they could be different than they are today.
But meanwhile, we just, the town would just sit down and?
They would, they would tell the developer that they were not accepting the proposal. And then the town could choose how it wanted to redevelop that land, whether that's putting out another proposal or developing it for town purposes.
Yes.
So we're, we're months away from any decisions. So the task force decisions will be September at best. Then goes to the planning, to the selectmen. And if the selectmen decide to pursue it, then goes to the planning board. The soonest town meeting approval would have to be in May twenty-seventh. A lot of, lot of questions to be asked, a lot of discussions to have.
I'd be surprised if they don't plan it together after.
For the main meeting?
Yeah.
It would, it would take a lot of work. I think that, I think they would be interested in doing that.
Yeah, it's a good character dangle, but I just.
And it's constantly put in every second of it, every second.
Took us a while just to build the other project. Yeah, when they own. Does the proposal include, would it mix things together like that? Since it's the same developer and we know that he will probably have a special permit application for it to go with like the barber shop and all that.
This proposal, this would be a single proposal, a, a single application to the planning board that takes into account two corners. So the, everything north of Eastern School Street. So Washington, both sides of Washington Street, north of Eastern School Street. And would also take into account the barber shop. If this proposal went forward, that's the proposal that has been submitted.
So it's the municipal lot and the ICC?
It's the municipal lot, Wentworth Hall, the ICC. And then there's a small parcel of land, portion of a parcel of land that's owned by the town that serves as the access to the Wentworth Hall library parking lot. So there are four parcels. The proposal is up on the website. We put a redacted proposal where we just remove the personal information, financial information that was submitted to the proposal. The selectmen and the task force will review, but it's not published in the mission. Everything else about the proposal, including the plans, the architectural, there's, there are both elevations and perspectives. That's all on the website. You go to townwestwood MA US. Then you click on land and properties. And you go to the Islington Center Task Force page. You'll find all the information.
That was good, my next question, I never.
I just, just did it yesterday?
Do you mind, why don't I demonstrate so that it's easier for people to find? Here's the town's webpage. Go across the top to land and property here. Click on that, go down to a list of boards within the land use departments. And here's the Islington Center Task Force. Click on that, you come to the task force's webpage. All the information about the task force, their meetings, the members. And then right here, Islington Center redevelopment request for proposals. We have both the RFP document on there and the one proposal received. So if I click on that proposal. It opens it up and you have the full text of the proposal. Scroll through and get to the plans. All exhibits, everything you need to see. All the coming up. It's slow, there we go.
Oh, yes, it's slowing.
There's some perspectives. This is the. So that's an, this is an example that shows the west side. West side of Washington Street, this is Cafe Diva is here now. And here is the municipal lot. So what they're proposing in this initial concept plan is a mixed-use building that crosses both of those properties. And you see up here what they're proposing is the Blue Heart Tavern to be located on the rear part of the former Taylor property. The Taylor shop right now is right about here.
That's a permanent proposal?
That's their proposal. The proposal calls for relocating and fully restoring that building and then giving that to the town to use for offices or some other space. That's part of the proposal. So this is the, this is the concept proposal. That doesn't mean that it'll be what moves forward, if anything moves forward, but this is what, this is what the proposal is for so far. And I'll show you the other side of the street.
How tall would that building be?
That's a three-story building that's been repaid. With one level of commercial, I think it's about eight thousand square feet of commercial on the first floor. And the proposals for twenty-eight apartments. So every aspect of the proposal will be discussed.
Looking at the quality of the building?
That, that's a proposal for a new building, yes. So I encourage you to go on the website, look at a proposal, go through it. Put together a list of questions or suggestions for things that, portions of the proposal you like, portions you don't, suggestions for something else you would like to see happen there. So here's the other side of the street. A portion of the other side of the street. You can see, this is where the ICC is now. This is where that little parcel is that's access to the parkula. The Wentworth Hall property is right here now. This proposal replaces the ICC with a new building for CBS. Moves the Wentworth Hall building to the location of the existing CBS. And puts a large addition on the back of it, a ten thousand square foot addition. Five thousand square feet on the first floor, they propose for MMO to have a new, a new location. And five thousand square feet on the second floor is proposed as a community center. And then a full basement is put under the whole building, the library, constitution. So that's, that's the proposal as it stands now. There's a lot more detail to it. So I encourage you to, on the website, download a version and submit any comments you have to the task force or come to the task force meeting on September eighth.
Good.
Good information. Thank you. I was unaware that was on a watch.
We just got this.
And the Westwood Press is putting an article on Friday. So that hopefully, anyone who is not watching WestPax catching a meeting or catching a celebrity meeting.
We're here with us.
Yes. Then, then maybe they'll see it in the press. So any, anyone you know who has any questions, anyone you speak to, please encourage them to come to the task force meeting or call or send an email. We'd love to get comments and that's it.
All right, great. Is it for committees?
So, we did have two members of the planning board, Dave and I, did the inspection of the Blue Heart Tavern.
Oh. How'd that go? Still old?
We looked at it from the basement, from the basement to the attic and it's still old.
Right, he's planning to move that pretty soon, so he's getting the building ready.
I saw them painting and doing things.
Yeah.
On the building the other day.
Closing it up and then just going to move down it, I think on a, on a Sunday morning. Probably mid-July.
Good, good to see activity. All right. Do we have any topics not reasonably anticipated? That we need to discuss?
Just a reminder, if anyone's interested, the groundbreaking for the police station is on Friday morning, eight AM.
Well, I will say that we do not have a regional, like, we do not have a transportation, what am I trying to say? Advisory council meetings since our last meeting. However, they have scheduled a tour of the commuter rail yards in Somerville on the thirteenth of July. Should you have a personal interest in such a facility, I believe it's open to you. It's a, it is a public tour. I'm not sure I'm going to attend, but I'm considering it.
So, okay. All right. With that, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Right? Nothing else to discuss as, as I see?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, you?
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Are we going to the, is anyone going to there or?